Good evening.
Nope.
See, I started earlier. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Weathersfield Board of Education. Tonight is Tuesday, December 14, 2021. Alan, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chairman Carey. Good evening, everyone. Mrs. DeRoberts?
Here.
Mrs. Drew?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mrs. Granato?
Here.
Mr. Lakhavoli?
Here.
Dr. Regan-Lafev?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Vice Chair, Mr. Cassiel?
Here.
Chairperson, Mr. Carey?
Present.
And Weathersfield High School Student Representative Lena Usello. All present.
Thank you. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and have Mr. Maltese lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Emmett, students, staff, recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. We have two presentations this evening. If I could please have our Weathersfield High School athletes come forward.
And Mr. Sutton, all that gray?
Yeah, it's gonna go away.
It'll go away in just a second. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Emmett, Chairperson Carey, and the Board of Education for having me and some of my student athletes here in attendance tonight as we talk about the past fall season at Weathersfield High School. The fall athletic teams at Weathersfield High School saw some very successful seasons. Over 400 students participated on 11 different sports teams, and with the addition of marching band and color guard, we saw almost 500 different Weathersfield High School students become involved in an after-school activity. The athletic department had their volleyball team, field hockey, boys' and girls' soccer, all compete in the state CIC state tournaments, while boys' golf, boys' and girls' cross-country, and girls' swimming and diving all sent individuals to the classmates, with boys' cross-country and swim also sending students to the opens. Football, after hiatus in 2020, played a full season, finishing with a 6-4 record. This year, we had nine all-state athletes and 33 all-conference players. Specifically this year, the Eagles saw four teams excel in divisional and state tournament play. Our girls' soccer team went 6-0 in the CCC North and won a conference championship. The Lady Eagles advanced to the state quarterfinals. The girls' swimming and diving team won a school-record 13th-straight CCC divisional title. At the conference meet alone, they saw 17 different athletes win 34 medals, where the Eagles completely dominated their CCC East opponents. The girls' field hockey team went 15-1 during the regular season and advanced to the state finals for the first time since 1980. These Lady Eagles won 18 games, which set a school record in the sport of field hockey. And finally, the boys' soccer team cruised through the Class L state tournament, outscoring their opponents 15-1. A senior-led team secured the 16th overall soccer state title here in Weathersfield. After a very difficult 2020-2021 school year, this past fall felt a little closer to normal. We were able to come back to a lot of things that we are accustomed to. It was great to see sporting events in our gym, our auditorium, and outdoors on all of our fields. We're grateful to have such strong performances. The marching band came back for band camp in August, played at Friday night football games, and participated in five different state competitions. Our cheerleading and dance teams performed at soccer games, football games, and are currently prepping for competitive seasons in the winter. And finally, our student sections were back in full force at all of our outdoor games, cheering on all of our Eagle teams. I personally would like to thank everyone involved these past few months, from my fellow administrators, our athletic trainer, our game workers, fans, parents, and booster clubs, but especially our athletes, some of them who are here today, for making the start of their 2021-2022 school year a special one. And I invited the captains from our four championship teams, our field hockey team, girls' soccer, swimming and diving, and boys' soccer. Unfortunately, a number of them were involved in either different sports today, or club teams, or had some work or personal commitments, but I do have some of the captains from our girls' swimming and diving team, Brooke Arnold and Jamie Condon, along with field hockey captains Molly Bowers, Emily Messina, and Caroline Provost. And if they are willing, would like you to share a couple of quick words about what high school life and Weathersfield athletics and activities means to them, to share with the board and the public and our guests here today. Would welcome to just share a couple of brief words.
Hi, I'm Brooke Arnold, and I'm captain for Lady Eagles Swim and Dive. We really had so much fun and really, really enjoyed, like, working with our teammates and getting back into the season after and during, like, such a, like, hard time. We really loved being an encouraging environment. Like, the team this year was, like, so much fun. We had, like, it was just, like, a perfect team. I couldn't have asked for anything more. And we really loved watching the girls work so hard, and, like, we hope to see a lot more successful seasons ahead, so.
Thank you, Brooke.
Um, We for Field Hockey had a really great season this year, and we were really proud of how far we made it in the tournament and how great we played in the regular season. And it was really great to see the support from the town and the other students and the teachers from our schools at the state tournament, selling concessions for us and everything since we couldn't do it this year. So we're really thankful for everybody who supported us.
Thank you very much. I think the girls just said it great. We have such a supportive community here, right from the Board of Education to all of our staff, all of our students, all of our parents. We have two of our coaches in attendance tonight, the Budets, that help guide the field hockey team, and they're certainly Eagle supporters, not just for the teams that they coach, but for all the Eagles. I think you see that wherever you are in Weathersfield, from our youth teams all the way up through our high school teams. So just want to thank everybody involved and thank you for allowing me to lead this great program at a great school. Any questions from the board? And I know we have a few new members. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to ask, are you seniors? Are they all seniors?
They're all seniors, yeah.
Um, you gonna play the sport in college, I hope?
Yeah.
Good. Good luck. Wishing you the best.
Any other board members? John?
Congratulations. You deserve everything you can possibly take in, ride the wave, no pun intended, to the swimming, diving, and, you know, make sure you continue to hit the stick out there with the field hockey. Great job. Thank you for representing our town and our school and your team. You made us proud. Thank you very much.
Any other board members? Mr. Lakhavoli?
Yeah, I would just like to say, thank you, guys. Thank you, ladies, for coming out tonight and introducing yourselves to us. I played sports at Weathersfield High School, and I know that it can be a time commitment in addition to your academic work, but it's really awesome that you guys did so well, and good luck in whatever it is that you do in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Drew?
I just wanted to say, congratulations. My daughter and I, we actually went to the field hockey championship, and we watched you. We cheered you on. You guys did a fantastic job, and we look forward to being there more in the future for you. So thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Regan-Lafev?
Congratulations to all of you, and also to all the other teams, even if they didn't advance quite as far. I'm sure you all put the same kind of intense hours in. Especially to the field hockey team, I mean, that is the best record for a Weathersfield field hockey team in my lifetime. I mean, that's incredible. So well done to all of you. I'm just wondering if any of the students want to comment on what they've learned from being active in high school sports on a sort of larger level in terms of skills?
Well, personally, sports really helped me, like, get through, like, schoolwork, too, because it, like, helps motivate me. And so, like, I guess it really, it also, like, helps with, like, dedication and all the things, and, like, just, like, getting through everything helps, like, it helps, like, with mood, like, helps, like, just keep me active and, like, just keep my mental health in state, too. So, yeah.
Anybody else like to share? They let their place speak for themselves normally on the field and on the pool.
Thank you. That was wonderful.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Healy?
I might as well. I also want to point out, aside from the great work all our teams did, the girls' soccer team, I think we talked about it the last time, for those who didn't, really did us proud with an exceptional act of sportsmanship, helping someone who's singing the National Anthem. I think we talked about that before, but I wanted to reiterate what that was all about, and that speaks great about our coaches and our kids and our parents for what they did. I think that, to me, was one of the greatest moments I've heard as a board member. I mean, we're particularly proud to live in this community. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Riley?
I just wanted to thank everyone. It was a great job, and speaking to Mr. Healy's point, my son was, is in the band, and he had a great experience. He has special needs, and it was great what the band did for him. So that's much appreciated.
Mr. Cassiel?
Yes, I just want to be remiss in thanking all the coaches for being wonderful role models for these students and committing their time and effort away and beyond to make it happen. So behind a good team is a good coach. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Yes, Mr. DeRoberts?
Also, just congratulations and thank you for a wonderful year. And aside from you, I'm just so thrilled as a former dance team mom to see that the dance team has become an actual sport. I know my daughter is thrilled. She was in the class of 2008, but she is still so happy to know that that finally happened. But congratulations to all of you. I know the kind of hard work that goes into this. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, girls. Congratulations. Congratulations to all the teams. Mr. Maltese, thank you for all your hard work. I know there's a lot going on. No, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Carey. Thank you, board. And if you don't follow us, we have three different social media platforms with WHS Athletics. We're on Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter, so we'll continue to try to do some more great things. Thank you all. Thank you to the Budets. You guys are an institution here.
Now, at this point in time, if I could please have Mr. Mark Danaher come up to the podium? Mr. Danaher, some of you may not know what he does, but let me tell you, Mr. Danaher is an incredibly important part of the Weathersfield Public Schools. Mr. Danaher has joined the Weathersfield Public Schools as the career coordinator at Weathersfield High School. And you're going to see his presentation a little bit later on. Here's a little sneak preview of it, but I did want to recognize Mr. Danaher because he was the recipient of a very distinguished award. Through his longtime focus on career development, he has been awarded the NCDAs Fellows Award. The NCDAs Fellow states that the recipient should have prior experience within the association, including leadership involvement, attendance at NCDAs events, and/or other related involvement that is unique to the applicant. It is considered an honor to be awarded this distinction, and this is a recognition of Mr. Danaher's tireless work to support the career aspirations of our students. So, Mr. Danaher, you want to talk a little bit about your role within this organization and how this award came about?
Yes. Well, thank you, Superintendent Emmett, and thank you, Chairperson Carey and the rest of the Board of Ed. Yeah, I really appreciate the opportunity I've had at Weathersfield. It's been a really, I've been here, this is my fourth year now, working with Weathersfield High School and really instituting career programs so students have an opportunity to experience the application of education to the real world. And so, we've done that in a number of different ways. We have a career advisory board that meets at the end of the last Monday of every month, and the opportunity there is to connect businesses, parents, students, faculty, to really kind of help drive the program, to make those connections so that we can easily implement some of the programs. I kept my presentation kind of simple. As we look through, one of the main things that we try to do are lunch and learns, and lunch and learns are an opportunity for students to come in and talk to a professional. So, pre-COVID, we used to have the professionals come in the building, and they would get a chance to meet with students, have a little pizza, get a chance to talk about their career story and what's going on. Now, we've been doing it virtually. So, the past fall now, we've been doing, we've had five speakers come in, and we've reached 90 students so far. The tough part is we have so many different lunch waves because we're trying to balance everything out. So, the way it's worked out really well is that we've had students come in, but what I've been able to do is to ask the professionals to record it and then share it with those students that have an interest. So, we've had those 90 students either be in person or through YouTube now and just be able to see those presentations and put it together. We are going to be doing a career fair in April, so April 28. We made a commitment that every student will go through the career fair. We did that virtually last year. We had 120 speakers virtually, that all students had the opportunity through advisory to check that out. But this year, we're going to do it, it's going to start at 8:15 in the morning. The first two waves that are going to come down are going to be grade nine and 10, and then we're going to switch it over. We're going to have grades 11 and 12 come down. It's also going to include an employment fair. So, we're going to be reaching out to local businesses to find what summer jobs they're looking for and how they want to hire some of our students going through. But the bigger thing, too, is that the goal is that students have a chance to interact with professionals and learn how to introduce themselves, how to carry themselves and have a conversation, and to make those key connections as they go through. Another one that we've been doing this year, which has been really, one of my passions that I'd love to see, is more classroom connections. We've done three so far. I've gotten into math classes, and it's starting to bring those pieces together. So, for example, we had a real estate agent come in. They were working on percentages within one of the math classes. We had a real estate agent come in and talk about how do percentages play out in your role? How do you work through commission? How does it play out in terms of who gets what percentage? And then they were able to ask questions about her job and what they do. So, it was a really excellent opportunity as it goes through. We haven't done industry tours lately. We've had opportunities, but the students are tired of the virtual experience, and I've offered those opportunities. So, as soon as we get that opportunity to go back out, we will start those tours and really connect in. Aerospace has been a wonderful opportunity. Travelers have been a big supporter of ours. They've done the actuarial days, and they've done job shadow days to really usually bring about 25 students down there to see a variety of different careers. And the biggest thing that we've been really trying to build in the program, I've been doing individual meetings, so I've met about 45 students so far, typically juniors and seniors, but I've also met with freshmen and sophomores, to help them kind of figure out where they want to go and what they want to do. And so, that's been an opportunity for me. They're either recommended from teachers or from counselors, and then I meet with the students and then do follow-up as they go through. And then the last piece is business partnerships. One of the things we've been trying to do through the career advisory board and put things together is to build those partnerships out in the community so we can tie them into the classroom, but also get the students out to experience, whether it be a job shadow. And eventually, our next steps that we'd love to see brought into Weathersfield are internships. One of the things that we want to do is have those students go through a class. We get a chance to spend 60 hours out in the community, unpaid work experience through a partnership with the state, and really try to see, I would love to see, two classes each semester where we can get 100 students out total in the year, where they'll be out with local businesses, anywhere from doing auto mechanic, and we've done that before when I was over in Manchester, all the way through in terms of healthcare, like physical therapy and so forth, to give our students an opportunity before they leave the high school, that they'll get that opportunity to see, is this something I really like or not, and how does that all come about? And so, and then the last piece that we're hoping for is to kind of do a little curriculum integration. Mrs. O'Connor and I met with about 20, 25 students one day to kind of find out what was going on, what are they missing, and they said, you know, we're not sure what to do. You know, we found out junior year, we're going to make a choice, but we don't know what to do. So, we're trying to figure out, how can we update the curriculum so that they can figure out, how do you make a decision? Who am I? So, they can start to put those pieces together earlier and get those experiences together so they have a plan as they leave the high school and put things from there. So, that's what we're doing in the high school currently, and we're looking for the future next steps as we go through. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Danaher, it's very interesting. Your focus immediately went to the students. I'm not surprised at all. I am really interested to understand, you getting an award such as you did, can you tell us about that award? I think it's really wonderful that you've been recognized by your peers for that.
Yeah, because my thing is I've been pushing, ever since I've been in school and working in education, is to push for success for students, to connect what's happening in the classroom to what's happening out in the world. I know things connect once they can see what they're learning in geometry and how shapes and sizes all go together, if they're going to look at carpentry, if they're going to look at design, they're going to look at architecture. You know, as they look at those different pieces and they start to see what happens in the classroom, it's amazing to watch the students see that bright light come on and make those connections. And even when they go out for shadows, you know, that's where I've always pushed. I pushed for my kids to go out, but I've also pushed on a national agenda. When I was president of NCDAs, my agenda was I wanted to see K-12 career education become more prominent. And one of the things that we developed through the NCDAs was a school career development advisor training program to help schools, if they don't have someone like me, to train them to understand how they can offer it within their school. And that's been the big thing, you know, my whole big piece. And you can ask anybody, and I have a lot of different people that have been connected, is I really want to see kids to have that opportunity. When I went through high school, and this is how we always kind of find our career paths, we always find something that we didn't have. I didn't have that connection. And so, I went through six different majors when I went through college, you know, and I tried a couple of different things here and there and realized, once I find my passion, how it all connected. And so, my goal is to try to help give those experiences to the kids here in Weathersfield as it goes through, so.
Excellent. Thank you.
That's great.
Any board members with questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Granato?
Um, Mark, you're great to work with. And the Career Advisory Board started because the strategic plan has that in it, that we would get these kids to be exposed to different careers. But the Career Advisory Board was great to be on, but we really weren't accomplishing anything with great ideas until you came along. And actually, you were the person who implemented so many of the ideas that the school needed, the students needed. So, I thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Dr. Regan-Lafev?
I have a number of questions. Would you like me to hold them for later in the agenda?
Yes, that would be excellent.
Congratulations.
Mr. Danaher, we're going to have you come back up and talk a little more in the meeting about the Career Advisory Board.
Okay.
And some of the specifics around your lunch and learns and other opportunities for students.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Moving on, do we have an approval of the minutes for November 23, 2021, regularly scheduled board meeting? So moved. Do we have a second? Thank you. Any comments, questions? Let me find the page. Alan, on this approval of last minutes, on page two, I think, it says, Mr. Healy corrected it from Ms. Granato to Mr. Emmett. It was myself, Mr. Carey.
Not Mrs. Granato.
Not Mr. Healy, on page two.
Oh, I don't have.
Oh, page two, from Healy to Carey. Any other comments or corrections? Seeing none with a motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Abstaining.
Thank you. You got that? Dr. Regan-Lafev abstaining? Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address. You have five minutes. Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Communications, Mr. Emmett?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening again, everyone. Want to give everybody a building update. Last Thursday, we had six members of the Weathersfield Town Council visit elementary schools to take a look at the physical plants for each of those buildings. So, you are aware with regard to the long-range building plan, we are currently awaiting geotechnical borings to be done on the two sites where new schools would be built. The enrollment study is progressing with regard to the update. The district this week provided our October 1 PSIS data to the company that is doing this work so that they may update our enrollment study projections out to 2031. In addition to that, I await word from the State Department of Administrative Services with regard to next steps, but we are moving full steam ahead. Also want to let the community know that we're going to be moving forward with a ventilation project at Hammer that is going to allow us to utilize the music room again. Right now, currently, Hammer is the only building where we are not having music in the music room because of the lack of ventilation. It's an interior room, and it doesn't have any windows. At one point in time, it did have a system in it, but it was removed. So, the project will be funded through the use of our American Rescue Plan Act funding. As you may recall, when we built the budget for the ARP funds, we surveyed the community on priorities, and one of the priorities from our community was on focusing on infrastructure. As a result of that, we allocated funds to go toward just that. So, we've worked collaboratively with the Physical Services Department. They have undertaken the engineering component as well as soliciting bids. At this point in time, Physical Services hopes to have this project take place over the holiday break so that music may return to the music room in January after break, and I'll have an update for you right after vacation. We'll have more details forthcoming at Monday's Facilities and Maintenance Committee meeting that will be held over at the Stillman Building on Monday, the 20th. Also want to let the community know the HR committee will meet this Thursday at 7:00 PM at Stillman. Mr. Danaher will be providing an update on HR functions at that meeting, including staffing, an update on where we are with staff. Want to let everyone know also that the Social Justice Coalition will be meeting for its monthly meeting this Thursday evening. We'll start at 5:30. I do want to let the community know that this meeting will be a Zoom meeting. Last month, for the first time, we had a hybrid model where we were either in person at the high school or remote. We had relatively limited numbers, and given the current situation with COVID, we felt it most appropriate at this point in time to do remote for that particular meeting. So, there will be a link available on our website. You may register right underneath the Social Justice Coalition banner on the Weathersfield Public Schools website. I want to also mention to members of the public, tis the season for attempted intrusions into our networks. Mr. DeRagan, our network engineer, has noted that we have seen a significant uptick in the number of attempts to access our network and our computer systems. Last weekend, we were notified of a threat that required us to install a software patch, so we actually took our Power School system down to install that patch. The IT team's ongoing investment in protective software and systems remains critically important in keeping our data system safe and secure. And again, tonight marks the only regularly scheduled board meeting of the month of December, so I do want to wish everyone in the community a safe and happy holiday season. That's communications.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. There are no action items. Moving on to report and discussions. Mr. Emmett, High Crest Leadership Team presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Carey. This evening, I am very pleased to have members of the High Crest Leadership Team and High Crest Administration to talk a little bit about the Leader-Leader Model. And I thought it would be perfect to bring in High Crest, is we have Ms. Maury, our new first-year principal at High Crest, who is getting her feet wet with the Leader-Leader Model and working with Lyle Kurtman. So, without further ado, if I could please have the leadership team and Ms. Maury come forward for presentation.
Good evening. I'm Christine Maury, principal at High Crest Elementary School. We're thrilled to be here with you this evening. Thank you for having us. I have brought with me four exceptional educators, four members of our leadership team. We currently have a leadership team with 10 members, and these are the four that I brought to speak with you this evening. I have Ms. Tara Carrero, grade-three teacher, and also peer award recipient for 2021. Next, I have Leanne Silver, our reading consultant. Next to her, I have Sue Brush, grade-two teacher, and also Weathersfield Teacher of the Year. And last but not least, I have Ian Lynch-Passarelli. He is our special education teacher. So, thank you for having us. Tonight, we're here to talk to you about the Leader-Leader Model and what that looks like at High Crest. When we start any meeting, we begin When we start any meeting, we begin with a mindful moment. A mindful moment at High Crest might look like a quote. It might be a song. We might have a raffle or play a fun game, but we always begin our meeting thinking about community and thinking about collaboration. And so we thought it would be appropriate to share some of that with you this evening. This is a slide we shared with our staff at a recent meeting focused on collaboration and why it is important. I'll give you a minute to look through some of the quotes. When we asked our staff to reflect on these quotes and find one that stuck out to them, the one that appeared the most was the quote that says, "Collaboration has no hierarchy. The sun collaborates with the soil to bring flowers to the earth." And we hope that when you hear our presentation this evening, you too feel that collaboration in that way and through that analogy of having no hierarchy.
She didn't tell me how to work this.
It's working, don't worry.
Phew. I said, being an elementary school teacher, usually one of the worst parts is open house because you're in front of all the parents and everyone's really, really nervous. This is worse. So bear with us. Leader Leader Model is when your principal trusts us to do this. I'm not sure. That might be a first-year mistake. We'll see how it goes. When she talked about her mindful moment, when we started to look at the Leader Leader Model, I guess the best way to explain it was to look at it kind of like a basketball team or that. So that's kind of the analogy you'll see on the screen up there. When she talked about her mindful moment, to me, it made me think like the pregame speech, the thing that gets you pumped up, excited, you know, staff meetings, sometimes you're like, eh, but the mindful moment really kind of centers us and gets us focused on what we need to do for the next hour. You can see kind of here, when I think of the head coach, right, it's your principal, it's the one who really drives and motivates our staff. She has, she has over 450 kids and she needs her team to be able to be inspiring, to motivate and to do that for our families and make that impact. She works very closely with her assistant coaches, which would be our instructional leaders. We have a new math specialist or consultant. That has been huge for our school and really is very important, especially with such a large group of people. We have our reading consultant, which you'll hear, Mrs. Silver, who is just one of the best that I kind of want to give her a shout out for. And Mrs. Gaeta, who's been filling many, many roles for us over at High Crest. So those, they work very closely together. I always think they're kind of looking at the Xs and Os of High Crest. Our leadership team, I kind of think of as the captains. We come together two times a week. I put the film session. We literally are in a room and we're kind of looking at the film, what's going well, what's not going well, what's up and coming, how can we reflect on our practice, what are we not doing very well? And what can we do better next time? Or what's going really well and we can keep doing? And those film sessions happen two times a month. The leadership team, when we're talking, this model, Leader Leader Model, we've been doing for like four or five years and it was not always pretty. We're about to highlight some of the great things that are going on at High Crest, but when we just started, we had no framework really for it. And Mrs. O'Connor really did a great job kind of spearheading that and leaving Mrs. Maury with a nice framework. And thanks to Mrs. Maury, she has really made it a priority to keep it going. And this is really important for us at High Crest. We think that it is really what helps us make a positive media impact on the kids in front of us. And I think our team, especially this year, where at times we are short-staffed, you're seeing teachers, you're seeing office staff, our secretaries, you're seeing our custodians, our lunch teachers step up and do things that they probably didn't know they were going to have to do, whether it's filling in as a paraprofessional, whether it's filling in for an extra recess duty, we are really all working as a team and there is no hierarchy. And I think you're able to really see that in this model. So we want to thank our former principal and our principal now for making this a priority. It means a lot to our staff and us. You can hear my voice. I don't usually shake like this. This is nerve-wracking, Mr. Emmett. Never again. Never again.
You're doing fine, Tara.
I don't know. No peer award after this. Although people are watching because they want to watch me mess up. The live stream's going to have big numbers tonight. Our leadership team, this is what our staff went and asked, like, what is the leadership team? This is really why it's important and we hope we can continue working in this model for years to come. It puts stakeholders really in the center of the decision-making process. All the teachers, classroom teachers, paraprofessionals, everybody just really feels like we are part of what is happening at High Crest and we are part of the decisions. And being on the front lines, working with the kids, we always have students in mind and we can make that immediate impact. And our goal is always to move the mission and vision of the school and the district forward. And I think we are able to do that with this model. Teamwork, collaboration, we ask our kids to collaborate all the time. And when you watch kids collaborate, it's difficult. When you watch adults collaborate, it's difficult. And we went through that kind of painstaking process in the beginning. We even took a personality inventory, which is a little tough to, when you get your scores back, it's a little like, ooh, God. You know, but figuring out like, it does help you understand how to work with the variety of personalities that I think you'll see even here tonight speaking. But understanding each other and being able to have open and honest conversation without, you know, being offended really helps drive that work and have everyone's voices heard. And it empowers our staff. We feel like we are important. We feel like we matter and the kids in front of us matter the most. And we feel like we can help them the most with this model because it's coming from the heart and it has everybody's voice heard. We kind of tried to stick with the basketball theme, so you're going to see, High Crest by the numbers, I like to look at it as our box score. So we will have Mrs. Silver, no, Mrs. Brush next. Yes?
Yep.
All right, you're up.
Is that when you were born? Is that when you were born?
Yes.
I just used the arrow.
No, it's not.
Thank you. Okay, so 1,950, that is the total number of instructional minutes per week that we are asked to fill with these little ones. So how do we do that? We had to create a building schedule. And we began this hard work a couple of years ago. Mrs. O'Connor and the leadership team at that time sort of built this framework. And now that we are somewhat post-pandemic, we were able to continue that hard work this year. In creating the building schedule for this year then, as always, we were determined really to maximize student learning by finding the most efficient use of every single minute. All stakeholders were given a voice in this creation. All we really had to do was ensure that all content areas, unified arts, ELL, special education, and SRBI requirements were met. Easy, right? So we began with the unified arts schedule and through a rotating unified arts schedule, we were able not only to ensure that students would see all four unified arts teachers in a week, but more importantly, that classroom teachers at every grade level would be guaranteed the exact same planning time every single day. That's critical for us because teams use this time to plan and collaborate as a grade level, to meet in data teams with instructional leaders, and also to meet and plan with ELL and special education teachers every week. Creating the UA schedule at High Crest is additional challenging due to the large size of our student population and the amount of sections per grade level. Our UA staff is the only one in town that teaches six sections per day, and that's a lot of sections to infuse into a building schedule. Finally, to ensure COVID safety protocols this year, we maintained a five-minute window in between UA classes to allow for those teachers to clean and disinfect in between classes and to move students safely through the building. This building schedule also provided each grade level with a dedicated win time, and win stands for what I need. During this time, support staff such as the reading or math tutors, the consultants, the ELL, the special education teachers can pull students out for services as needed. During this block of time, no new instruction is occurring in the regular education classroom so that students who are leaving are not missing any new instruction from the classroom teacher. For the students who are remaining in the classroom, the regular education teacher meets with small groups and provides differentiated instruction, review, and enrichment based on what those children need. We also considered when developing this schedule, what was developmentally appropriate for the ages of our children when scheduling lunch and recess. We then compared the timing of lunch and recess with unified arts for each grade level. We considered, are students at this grade level getting breaks during the day in places that make the most sense for them? So for an example, we knew that our kindergartners would need a daily schedule that allowed for smaller chunks of instructional time and breaks for UA and lunch and recess in very specified parts of the day. And furthermore, with the large student population at High Crest, we had to be very mindful of how many children can physically fit in the cafeteria at a time, especially with COVID protocols. So given all of these considerations, grade level teachers were able to provide feedback on which lunch, recess, and unified arts schedules they felt were most appropriate for their students. And finally, within the framework of what was left for the daily schedule, grade level teachers were able to determine which content they would like to teach at which times of the day. The leadership team then reviewed these requests to ensure that, for an example, not everyone in the building was teaching reading at 10:00 AM in case consultants or specialists needed to push in for support, they would be able to do so. So giving the control of this schedule to the stakeholders, the teachers themselves, has had a direct and positive impact on the planning and the collaboration that occurs among our staff, which then also has a direct and positive impact on our instruction and on our students. All right, 66.
Hi, good evening. Some stats for you on our arrival and dismissal procedures. So 66, that's the number of cars that come through our parent loop at our school each day. On any given day, dropping off or picking up their children will have 66 cars come through the loop. 10 refers to the number of school buses that we have transporting our children each day. And 3, the number of daycare and after-school activities providing transportation like Taekwondo and KidCo and Kinder Care. So a little bit about our arrival and dismissal procedures and how we have gotten to the place that we're at right now. Anyone that has traveled down High Crest Road in the past few years around the time of about 3:00 o'clock or so knows what a nightmare and a headache it was to try to come anywhere close to High Crest Road and/or get into our school parking lot. Last year, when students were attending school in the hybrid model and then transitioned to full in-school time again, we experienced a very large increase in the number of parents dropping off and picking up their children. When 20 to 25 kids turned into over 100 kids getting picked up from school, our staff quickly realized that we needed to revisit how we handled dismissal here with safety always at the forefront. Our staff had very, very thoughtful conversations and discussions and had the opportunity to provide feedback on our arrival and dismissal procedure and process. This year, we switched up the bus and parent drop-off and pickup loop locations with the lens of ensuring safety and maintaining efficiency always in our mind. The buses now drop off and pick up students in the back of the school. After hearing staff concerns and suggestions during optional summer meetings with Christine, Christine met with our bus company and Mike Bearable, head of Weathersfield District Security, over the summer to ensure that our school buses would in fact be able to swing that loop in the back of our school through the staff parking lot. They had cones set up and they were able to make that maneuver. The parent pickup loop is now located in the front of the school. This allows more cars to be off the main road, off High Crest Road, and helps with that bottleneck car and bus situation that was really slowing down our dismissal at the end of the day. This process has also eliminated, believe it or not, students and parents running up the hill in the front of High Crest School between buses when they were there to get up to reach their parent cars up in the road there. Much more safe, which was our big concern, both for the staff and the parent community. So our initial plan was to try this process for one month. After collecting additional feedback from all stakeholders involved in the arrival and dismissal process, we actually decided to continue utilizing this procedure and it's been very effective. The staff as a whole has had a lot of great feedback and I think the community as well for our new process.
Good evening. 58. 58 hours of collaborative staff meetings and professional development for both certified and non-certified staff. Our Leader Leader Model has allowed for these hours, important work that shapes our staff, our vision, and most importantly, our students. As a school-level team, we have created and begun to implement our annual school improvement plan that incorporates the three district priorities. Empathy, equity, and achievement. In empathy, we have piloted our Rethink Ed, a social-emotional learning program that has allowed our school community to provide tiered social and emotional learning to our students in an innovative and engaging manner. Our Leader Leader Model has also given our school community the opportunity to bring important district-level equity professional development in the area of empathy and social-emotional learning. We are currently in the process of integrating a restorative practices model for addressing social and behavioral challenges in the classroom. Equity. Our Leader Leader Model has allowed visiting community leaders and professionals to be invited to speak during professional development opportunities, such as Sarah Gilbert of Transition Therapy. And these professionals provide specialized professional development for staff regarding school and student equity issues. The Equity Committee also holds meetings at various levels of the district. District level brings back work and learning to the school-level team, who in turn bring that work and learning to the students and the staff at High Crest Elementary. Achievement. Our Leader Leader Model has allowed for such supports and structures as our data team, our grade level planning, and after-school collaborative and special ed planning time. Our data team is comprised of teachers and grade level teams who meet regularly to review student data from formative, summative, and standardized assessments. Grade level teachers and curriculum specialists use data and district-wide assessments and interventions for reading and math to determine how best to support students performing at all levels of proficiency. Part of our achievement piece is also our grade level planning. Teachers are able to plan with their grade level teams. In these planning team time allotments, teachers are able to bring learning from data team and professional development opportunities to their specific teams. There, they are able to ensure that student academic and social outcomes are thoroughly planned out, aligned with curricular standards, and optimized for the learning of all students. Our achievement piece also includes after-school collaborative special ed planning time, which occurs within contract time of certified educators and service providers. Special education teachers, related service providers, and regular education teachers meet at least twice monthly with grade level teams and regular education teachers to cover a variety of responsibilities that ensure success for our shared students. This includes reviewing upcoming curriculum elements to aid in making modifications and accommodations for our special education students. Also, determining the efficacy of certain inclusive practices and classroom supports and adjusting according to student performance. These meetings also allow us to plan for inclusion instruction and application of skills taught in the resource room towards grade level expectations in the regular classroom. These three district-wide and school-wide priorities exist not separately, but as an integrated set of priorities that inform each other to address all aspects, social, emotional, and academic, that contribute to student learning and success at school and beyond.
The number four. It seems so small compared to the other numbers we shared with you this evening, but this one too is powerful. It's powerful because the number four represents our Leader Leader Model spreading out into our High Crest community. Our High Crest community is a passionate one, and the number four represents the number of coffee and conversations that we have had with families so far this year. Coffee and conversations started in July when I began my role as principal at High Crest. We've had one every six weeks since then, in September, in October, and in November. During these four coffee and conversations, I have seen over 54 families come to join me. We have three goals that I set each time and share each time when we have a coffee and conversation. The first goal, to build connection. The second goal is to ask questions and provide feedback. And the third goal is to build our community, to foster those connections both inside and outside of our school and to build that strong bridge between home and school. outside of our school, and to build that strong bridge between home and school. Relationships are critical to our work, and these coffee and conversations allow us the opportunity to bring our community into our leader-leader model.
Oops, that was that one.
That's a really big number.
Almost 500.
That's a big one.
Popsicles. So many popsicles were given out at the meet and greet to meet Mrs. Maury. That was the first time our community was able to meet with Mrs. Maury, but that tells you how supportive our community is. They came to the playground and there were 500 popsicles given. 23, those were the number of new families that came to tour our building, but I think the really cool part is actually that the PTO, along with current family members and current students, gave the tour. So, they came to show off their building and what they were proud of. And then 8, that's the number of songs on Mrs. Maury's playlist on Fridays. Speaking of a welcoming community, they kick off Fridays with a Friday dance party in the morning. So, when you come on Fridays, you get to see Mrs. Maxa, who's one of our paraprofessionals, and Mrs. Maury, and any unsuspecting passerby that they drag in, even if they don't like to dance, to kind of welcome the kids, which has been a really cool new tradition. We love traditions at High Crest, and that's a new one.
I could beat the 500. 13,768, that's our book fair total sales this fall. As a school, we got over, well, over $2,900 to spend on books and an additional $1,000 spent on scholastic books right then and there at the end of the book fair. So, before all the books were packed up, we were able to go through the shelves and immediately pick up some of the books that we were really interested in. Our goal is to build up our classroom libraries, our bookroom libraries, as well as just our school library, and include more diverse texts with a lens of diversity in our library collection. So, what does this have to do with leader-leader? Well, Kelly T., or Tatro, she commonly goes by Mrs. T. at school, is our school library media specialist. She took the lead on the book fair this year. She organized the setup and provided the schedule for classes to come and preview the books. She suggested and then ran the book fair herself during the school day. That was new for us and really allowed a more equitable chant, you know, for all of the students to come and choose books during the school day. They didn't have to come back after school hours in order to get those books. Kelly organized parent volunteers to help support and run the registers, as well as help the kids with their book lists, their wish lists, and it really was a huge success. So, we're very grateful for Kelly taking the lead on that and being able to use her time to benefit all the students in the school.
So, in addition to our library media specialist taking the leadership role in the building, our PE teacher, Kevin Kobelski, has also spearheaded two really important recent events at High Crest. 69 is the number of sixth-grade students who participated in a recent Turkey Bowl where they were able to play football against one another. Although Mr. Kobelski organized the event, we did see some leader-leader model trickling down into our sixth-grade students who also were able to assist in the planning and the execution of the event. And as always, Mr. Kobelski had the support of the full staff to ensure student coverage and safety outside, in addition to cheering on our biggest Bulldogs. 245 is the number of student participants who ran in the recent Jingle Bell Run. This was another event that was spearheaded by Mr. Kobelski, but it absolutely took all staff members to pull this one off. In order to make it more equitable and available for all students, we decided to hold students after school this year, rather than sending them home and then asking parents to bring them back again. This absolutely helped us to increase our participation, but it took all the classroom teachers to agree to hold children for much longer after school, dismissing them to parents that they could see outside at the dismissal time. It took the nurse and the secretaries in the office fielding phone calls, dealing with the walkie-talkie, making announcements over the loudspeaker to ensure the safety of all students. And in addition to that, 20 staff members stayed to participate in the event by securing the safety of intersections on the roads, collecting the toys, running with the children, and cheering them on. For all of these events, we've definitely had to rely on staff members to lead and plan, organize and execute all of these events with safety and equity as our lens and focus.
100. This number represents the amount of items that have been donated thus far to our care closet. The care closet is an initiative that is led by our school social worker, another school-level leader, where students are able to confidentially request and receive clothing and other necessary items without having to explain why the item is needed. The items provided to students in need include the following: backpacks, school supplies, new reusable water bottles, winter coats, gloves, hats, mittens, and socks. And it is an ongoing initiative that lasts year-round. And that leads us to the most important number of all. 1, one amazing school, High Crest Elementary. Thank you for having us.
Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions or comments from the board? Mr. Lackavoli.
This sounds tremendous. It sounds really positive, and I'm really glad that High Crest has had a positive experience with the leader-leader model. I'll stick with the number theme. If, I don't know if you have come to consensus on this, or if you all have your own thoughts and ideas, but if you could pick one or two reasons why other schools should try this, or one or two ideas or themes as to why you think this works so well, whether it's improving morale, or simplifying schedules, or allowing you to work to the best of your ability, or anything that I haven't just mentioned, what would you say is the best part about this?
Well, I think there are many great parts, and we highlighted so many of those, but I'm the newbie. So, for me, the best part for me is that this team that was established before allows new people in. And they not only allow new people in, but they provide them with opportunity to come up with new creative thinking and to problem-solve and to feel a part of the team. So, for me, it's not this exclusive group. It really goes back to that quote we shared at the beginning, that all really are involved, and we do take that seriously in terms of all stakeholders' voices being heard.
Thank you. Dr. Regan LaFave.
Thank you all for your comments. It's evident that you take a great deal of pride in this process and also in your school, and I commend your principal because I think it's really a sign of a confident and competent leader who listens to teachers and who is willing to take feedback and who is open and honest. I think that's fantastic, and it should be something we see across all our schools. I hope we do. One question I do have about this, I think it's great to hear about you getting together in your teams and, you know, analyzing the data regarding assessments and benchmarks and so on. I'm just wondering if this has created more work for teachers. I recognize that the trend has been over the past few decades towards more assessments, more requirements, more hoops for teachers to jump through. COVID's only made that worse, and we have not found a way to make more hours in the day. And I'm not talking about contracted hours, I'm not talking about negotiations or any of that. I just mean actual physical hours in the day. So, has this model with all these meetings added to your workload, or has it been neutral or even improving it?
I knew Tara wasn't going to walk up here, so I had to.
Well, so, I think that that is a fine line to walk, and I'm being very honest as a longstanding classroom teacher, right? There is a point where assessing can be overdone, but there is also a point where assessing can be very profitable and very powerful. And if it's done correctly with intent and purpose, and if it's analyzed with that same lens, it can be used to really drive instruction and make your teaching more efficient, which actually gives you time on the other end. So, as a classroom teacher, is it a lot of assessing for me to do when I have kids that I'm concerned about, and I know that I've got a data team meeting where I have to bring that data and talk about those kids? Yes, that can be stressful, but once we analyze not just the data for numbers, but the performance of the children, and then use that information to help me develop small groups, to help me align curriculum with student need, whether it be for remediation or for enrichment, it allows me not only to make my instruction more purposeful for children, but more efficient. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
That absolutely does. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but just to follow up, would it be fair to say that this process is perhaps a bit time-consuming to implement, but when it's running well, as it appears to be running now, it actually makes you feel more efficient and productive in your time?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Roberts.
I really enjoyed hearing about this. I had an opportunity on a much smaller scale when I was teaching our kindergartens between sessions. We would have meetings every single day and did a lot of the same kind of work, and it's just really inspiring to think of the whole system being involved. And from what I'm reading about it, that when I talk about whole system, that's Board of Eds, superintendents, principals, and teachers. And I really admire that you stuck this out through the worst of times, COVID, but I can see that this would be like custom-made for a crisis time. This is one you really, really need to work together as a team and really hear each other out and support each other in a non-threatening way. So, I would really love to hear about this with the other schools, too. So, I'm very happy about this.
And I appreciate your point because I think that because our team has that feel to it, they can say to me, not right now, it's too much, how about next week or next month? And we talk about those kinds of things, and we are strategic in how we roll things out or how we build extra time in, and I think that makes a difference, too. That comes from our leadership team.
Mrs. Maury, there are two examples. I don't have to step up there.
Yes, you have to step up. It's live, so we gotta be able to hear you at home.
I just want to say that there are two examples that speaks to what Mrs. Maury is saying. One of the things with time is that she's made a point during our staff meetings, which we were going to add, but we didn't, to make sure that we have team time at the end. So, most of the time, our staff meetings would fill the hour. She makes it a point to make sure that we have team time, so whatever is given to us by our, you know, the professional development or whatever happens to be given, we have like 20 minutes at the end to make sure we have a product. And elementary school teachers are crazy about the why, and they need a product. And she's done a very nice job of making sure that she gives us the, tells us the why, or maybe sometimes it's generated by us, and then that we come out with a product all the time. And I think that helps teachers, and that's the immediate impact that you're seeing.
Thank you. Ms. Granato.
Well, about five years ago, maybe a little longer now, COVID kind of skews our idea of time right now, but we started this leadership model in the schools. And when I first read all of Lyle Kirkman's work, I said, if we did this, we would have a system we would be so proud of. And I want to throw it out to High Crest School. We are so proud of you, the way you're working this. This is just how it's supposed to work. And Kristin, I have to tell you, to come in new and to do this, you really have a great deal of trust in your teachers, and I'm glad they have a great deal of trust in you. I do have one question, though, and it's really a minor piece, but it becomes major. When you do leadership meetings, so it's twice a month, I gather, that you sit down as a leadership team, who calls these? I mean, do you do these as a group all the time? Are they called on an emergency basis? How is it utilized, and who can call it, and who can cancel it? I hope nobody cancels it.
We decided on the schedule before the school year started. So, that was one of our initial moves in the leader-leader model was to set our calendar. So, we have faculty meetings that are scheduled on Tuesdays. Our leadership meetings are also scheduled on alternate Tuesdays. And so, we have basically blocked out Tuesdays for this model to function, and we do it after school. We have canceled some, we've moved some around based on need and how to best move the work forward.
I just so admire the communication that's coming out of yours, that I'd hate to see it interrupted as you move along the school year, because as you know, the school year kind of gathers moss, and before you know it, it's just gigantic, and a lot of things happen. So, this is a great communication tool.
And we set that commitment early on. We set the commitment with our data teams, Leann, Pam, our curriculum specialist, and Melissa, our math interventionist. We committed to making data teams a priority in our schedules, so we also go to all of those, all seven of those meetings each week. So, those kinds of things were built into our schedule early on, which makes them be able to remain consistent throughout.
Guys, it was fabulous. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one last comment about that.
No problem, please.
To that point, though, we have pulled back on some of those predetermined meetings when we recognized that there were other things on our plates as teachers that needed to be done. For an example, we had some data we wanted to collect on the SEL and the emotional development of our littlest ones, and Mrs. Maury recognized that there was no more time in the day to get that work done, so she backed off of data teams for two weeks so that we could use the data team time we needed to complete that work. So, there is a lot of communication between Mrs. Maury and the leadership team to try to meet everyone's needs and be sensitive of time and the amount of work that has to be done.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Mr. Riley.
I just wanted to make a comment that the, you know, things like the coffee and conversations are really innovative, you know, ways to communicate in a non-threatening way, and you folks are having fun, and that's great, great sense of humor.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? Mr. Cassio.
Just want to say thank you. Keep up the spirit. I think that's what it's all about. The kids look up to you, and they see you're having a great day, they're going to have a good day. If you have a bad day, they're going to pick that up, too. They're pretty savvy, but just from what we saw tonight, you know, I wish I was back in High Crest. No, I'm only, no, I don't. What I did pick up was I thought it was on the keynote commercial, when 1950, all 19, come running up, and fives and threes and tens. Great job, you know, use of creativity, and, you know, that just trickles down to the kids. So, I really think that's a positive flow at High Crest. Thank you for all you do. We're proud of you.
That was a slam dunk, by the way.
And if you ever need some joy, just please join us on Friday morning. We dance from 8:35 to 8:55. We have solid playlists every Friday. Please just come. We go 70s, we go 80s, we jump all around on our playlist, but come and have some fun with us. It's a great way to start your day.
That is.
Thank you for having us.
Anyone else with questions? Hold on. May not be done, anyone? Ms. Maury, could you talk about your work with Lyle, what you've done?
Yes, I have been doing some mentoring work with Lyle individually, and that's helping me to grow this leader-leader model and to better understand it. He and I meet about once a month, and then this past time, it wasn't just Lyle and I, we invited our entire leadership team. The work that we did during that meeting was critical because he shared my personality inventory with all of them. It was a little intimidating, but I think eye-opening for them to understand why I lead the way that I do and why I am the person who I am. And then they were able to share, too, how they have grown, because that, for many of them, was the second time they've taken that personality inventory, and they had a chance to reflect on how they have grown as leaders over the last couple of years and be able to share that with each other. So, our work with him has been powerful, it's been ongoing, and we'll continue to work with him as the year goes on.
Excellent, thank you. Great job, everyone. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Moving on to Career Advisory Board presentation. Mr. Emmett.
Mr. Danaher, if you could please come back up to the podium.
Mr. Danaher, if you could please come back up to the podium. Mr. Danaher, you provided a little bit of background during Staff Student Recognition. And, you know, I'd like to go with this portion of the meeting a little deeper with regard to the Career Advisory Board. And if you could, just, you know, expand upon what you've done with regard to your students and engaging students in work, both in the community. And as Mrs. Granato said, the strategic plan talks about, you know, bringing the community into the school. So if you could talk about what you've been doing, we'd appreciate it.
Yeah, so as we look at the Career Advisory Board, the nice part about it, it's a great bunch of individuals that help kind of be a sounding board and help us implement and make connections. So as we think about, you know, out in the community, one of the things that we've been trying to do is grow business partnerships. I've reached out to parents. I'll be reaching out to them again. And my goal is to really bring the community and the school together as it goes through. Because if we build that community, just like we heard with Highland, you have a community that works well and it's successful. That's one of the things I think that will make this high school outstanding and that will be a model going through, is that what I've been doing is trying to reach out to all different areas. The way that I grow it is that I, each year, I survey the students. And we go through, in the first, second week of September, we had 975 of the high school students complete the survey. And that really drives how we're going to start connecting in different professionals. Reaching out to the teachers has been another piece bringing that together. But my goal is when I do any of the programs, when you look at the attorney, when you look at psychologists, the actress, those were the top three careers that students were interested in this year. And so I can choose a number of different things, but I want it to be student-driven as we go through to figure out what that success is. So that's been part of that process. What we've been trying to figure out is how do we get those different industry tours that take what's happening in the classroom going forward? So it's been tough right now, but in prior years, we've had them out to the aerospace industry, where they've had the manufacturing, they've had a chance to go in and learn what are those opportunities and careers. But the other part is to practice those soft skills. How do you go up and talk to a professional? How do you make an introduction? What is your goal when you meet someone? You know, and that's part of the process that we go through, anything that we do. Currently, we're working with the career prep class. January 6th, they're going to be doing mock interviews. We have nine professionals that have volunteered to come in. And what they're going to be doing is they're going to actually have a model. We have a job description. The students will create a cover letter. They will create a resume. There is a rubric that we use for the interview. And the students have a 10-minute interview and a five-minute feedback session. And then the professionals then will score the rubric, and that's handed over to the teacher and eventually handed over to the student as we go through. And then typically, we'll have a few of those professionals speak to the group and say what went well, what didn't go well. But that's a semester-long class, and this is like the accumulating project that we can bring and start applying those skills going forward. And so that's been part of our process, is how do I figure out to bring those different connections in there as we go through? And this was easy. We had 26 students put together. Last year in May, we had, I think it was 69 or 71 students that we had to do through breakout rooms on virtual, and the rooms weren't working right. And then we were doing a little IT work, and we were showing the students this and how we can put it together. And it worked out wonderful. They put it all together. But that's the goal as we go through, is how do we bring the community in, but also bring the students out? One of the things that I would love to see, and once everything opens up again, is we want to bring it down to Old Weathersfield. What we really want to do is put together a project where we have students go to four different businesses. They choose two different career presentations. And then end up over at Lucky Lou's and do an etiquette dinner to learn how do you do a business dinner? How do you meet and greet? How do you talk? So that we can start designing those skills. So it's those type of projects that we're trying to institute as we go through to help the students connect. Right now, we've been doing a lot of the field research. Students haven't been able to go out too much because a lot of the corporations are not back in. So we've been doing phone calls, and they've been doing Zoom calls and Google meets and Teams, whatever they use as they go through. And it's a chance for students to get to know who's out there, ask them those questions. I had a student that went to one of the elementary schools to follow an art teacher for an hour and a half. And he came back and he said, "I do not want to work with three, you know, that grade three, grade two." I could, it was just so much, I don't know how they do it. And he goes, "I love art, but I can't manage the students." Well, that was an eye-opener for him. He could figure out, all right, I don't want to do that, but what levels can I do? And so that's part of the process, is how do we open up our students' eyes to see those opportunities? And that's what I've been trying to grow through the Lunch and Learns. The Lunch and Learns are opportunities that we drive based on student interest. You know, getting the career fair. You know, as much as they get to learn the career piece, they get to learn how do they interact with different adults and find those connections. And my goal is that they make three quality connections during that time that they can follow up on, so that they have this business relationship that they're starting. And the nice part about it, as we were going through, it's just that time that they get the chance, "How do I network and how do I move through that crowd?", that they haven't had that opportunity before. You know, a lot of times, I know for my first time was I was going out as a professional trying to find a job. But for these students, if we can help build that along the way, they're going to walk out as young professionals. They're going to have that opportunity to find out whatever career path that is. And I think that's the other important part of it, really trying to bring in, is that, you know, four-year colleges worked well for a number of students, but we have so many other students that are trying to figure out, what are the trades? What are the different apprenticeships that we can go into? What are the two-year opportunities? And what are even the gap year opportunities? You know, go for city year. I can do 10 months, earn some money, but get a chance to spend four days volunteering and one day learning about a nonprofit and how to run it. These are opportunities students don't know about, but it's also an opportunity for them to grow as an individual and eventually lead to where they want to go. So that's some of what, you know, we've been doing. And the biggest thing is try to figure out, how do we grow the program as we go forward? And I think that's where we're looking to try to build some of that curriculum integration in. So we bring some of those soft skills, some of those different pieces. To give an example, it's easy if we think about history. If we take a history essay, and they normally do it on Napoleon or Justinian, we can easily turn that into a resume and have them do a resume on Napoleon or Justinian. And then they can start their own resume. So then they understand how to do it because they got to see this, you know, model historian and put it all together of this figure, but then they can start doing theirs. So it's just changing up the way we look at some of the curriculum, is how we do things. And then really getting them out in the internship classes, so.
Mr. Danaher, can you talk a little bit about some of the connections? I know you mentioned before travelers. What are some of the other businesses and colleges and universities we're partnering with?
So if we look at travelers, it's wonderful. They've stepped up, and they have an excellent connection with us. The Hartford, we're working on an internship program over the summer with Hartford. That'll be in IT as they go through. As we look at Capital Community College, they've stepped up and worked with us, and we have their career director is now on our advisory board and connecting with us. And Duncan Harris has been wonderful, their president, in opening up his doors and connecting well with us. And Goodwin University has been another one that we've been looking at and working with to look at advanced manufacturing and figuring how we can take some of our current tech courses, all right, our career technical ed courses, and how do we match them up with Goodwin University courses so that students can earn credit at the high school? But then hopefully, our goal is then to then build it into a mini certification that can lead to them either continuing at Goodwin or going on to another school for advanced manufacturing. So those are some of the ones that we're looking as we go through. Our goal is always to try to build those different partnerships and trying to find out what are the key ones going through. We have 156 different partnerships that I've built over the course of the time, and it's really come from the Career Advisory Board. The members there have been wonderful to reach out and to connect me with different people in the community, along with me reaching out to the parents.
Thank you. Any more members with comments or questions? Dr. Regan LaFave.
Thank you so much. This is really fascinating, and I love the work that you're doing. In my day job, I'm a college professor, and I've done a lot of career-type work of integrating career development into the liberal arts. So this is, I love this stuff. And I can also tell you, and I speak on behalf of all college professors here, that yes, please work on that professional interaction. The number of emails I get that just begin, "Hey", and the refrain of college professors is always, "What are they teaching them in high schools? Or what are they not teaching them?", things that we think are just sort of basic etiquette. So that's really important. The internship aspect is also really important. And it might seem to some people like, oh, they're quite young, though. I mean, does it really matter? You don't want to pigeon the whole of them too young. You don't. But I can tell you, having looked at a lot of students on a competitive four-year college, there are those who have come from affluent communities and have already done internships. And there are those who come from less affluent committees, communities and have not. And that is an equity issue that is actually starting really young, and it's kind of hidden. It's invisible. But if you want a career in finance, you're looking to get that big finance internship after your junior year of college. To be competitive for that, you want to have already done internships. And sometimes that even tracks back to high school. So actually, getting them on that pipeline is really important. One issue I do foresee us having to deal with down the line is how do you help out students who can't afford not to work? So that's something we should probably think about, and maybe we can get, you know, some grant money or something like that to consider how we could make that feasible for all students. Because as I said, it is an equity issue. So I think this is all great, and I'd love to chat more with you about that. I then just have one question, which is totally my own ignorance as a new member of the board. What is the relationship between your job and college counseling? Like, how does that work in practice?
So I work with the school counselors. My role is to really help them figure out, and the counselors usually refer students to me who don't know what they want to do. So I don't do a lot of the college, I have done college counseling, but that comes from school counseling. But I help them look at all the different apprenticeships, the trade schools, the two-year schools that they go through to figure out what programs connect for them. So I will help or assist the school counselors as they hit different students that go, "I'm not sure what I want to do," or, "Do you know, I'm looking at electrician. What's the apprenticeship program? Who's the contact?" And then I step in and partner with them to bring that together.
So you're meeting both students who are, who know that they're college-bound but want to explore careers, and students who are thinking, "I don't want to go to a traditional college route, but I want to explore my options."
Or they don't even know what they want to do. They know they want to do some type of further education, but they have no idea what the major or the pathway is. And so I'll do some of that and help them with some assessments. I'll help them figure out with opportunities, connect them in as they go through. So like the art student that I talked about, after that, now we have a meeting with a marketer. And he also figured out, "I like medical illustration." So I found a medical illustrator out of Boston that I connected him through, that I connected through LinkedIn, and she was willing to talk to him because she does all the different textbooks and so forth. So those are the things that I try to do, is I try to be a connector for students because I can reach out through the network that we have on the advisory board, but also that I can use through LinkedIn and so forth. And it's been a wonderful opportunity that way because then it grows in a different way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members with questions or comments? Amanda.
I just wanted to say this was a great presentation, and I really appreciate how you're broadening the career services because you're not only letting the kids pick a path or what they want to do, but you're also teaching them the etiquette that they need, the thank you letters, the follow-ups, the things that they're going to actually need to actually get the job. Because that's always sometimes the hardest thing to do when you're first coming out. So I think that's fantastic. I love it, and I can't wait to see what you do in the future because I've got a couple of kids coming up, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. And I am happy to hear how you will use the regular curriculum to build into it. I think that, you know, K to 12, it's really important that they still get those basic liberal arts background. And also, I just got a kick out of the art student who followed the art teacher. I would, I might, what I would say to him would be, "Try it again." You know, there's other areas for art certainly and everything. But I think in some cases, maybe with the kids going out, that, you know, being encouraged to give it more than one go is sometimes a good advice also.
What I try to do is I try to let them, like, "Here, try another thing, and then let's go back." You know, because sometimes they're shell-shocked. Like, he was, he was shell-shocked from going into the elementary school because he didn't remember it that way, you know, as he was there. So once it came through, it's trying to work them through.
Right. Well, it is student teaching. You're kind of shell-shocked first week, so.
Thank you. Any other board members? Mr. Riley.
Thanks so much for all of your hard work and keep pushing the soft skills because I think both of my kids, they spend so much time on the computer. I don't even think they know how to talk to anyone.
Well, I think if you see any student, a high school student, I see my own kids at home. You know, I have two sophomores, and, you know, they, you could be in a group, and they could be next to each other, and they're texting each other, and yet they could easily turn and have a conversation. And that's part of the addictive technology that we have to kind of look at and address. And that's part of it. It's like, put it down, let's have a conversation. And even just leaving a message on a cell phone, like, how do you call up? One of the things I have my own kids do, but I try to make an order for dinner, like, call and order. They have a hard time doing that, you know, because they're not used to that. They can just jump on an app. But I said, "Call." And that's the same thing when we're in the career fair. You have to face somebody face-to-face and have a conversation and look them in the eye and say, "Hi, my name is," and then ask them a question, which a lot of them haven't done before. And so it's a great learning experience. And I know, you know, going through it, when we did the last career fair in person, you know, we had almost 570 kids that went through, and it was just amazing to watch them interact and to talk to the employers afterwards and to hear, you know, how well the students did and rose up to the occasion. And I think that's the part, is we just keep raising the bar and help bringing those things together for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Akavoli.
Thank you for being here tonight, and congratulations on being recognized for your work as well. A lot of the things that you're saying, they really hit home. And two of the things specifically, the soft skills, like Jim and Jennifer just mentioned. My wife, where she works, she does hiring. And sometimes she sends me screenshots of the emails and the resumes, and some of them are just out of this world. I can't believe that they even sent them in. And she tells me another problem is that young people nowadays, they have a problem shaking her hand, looking her in the eye, and introducing themselves to her. So it's awesome, awesome that we're working on those things. And then another, one of the things that you've mentioned that really hit home was the idea that people now are maybe considering gap years or considering other types of careers and professions that don't entail college. I know that when I was in high school, I felt that college was jammed down my throat as the only option possible after high school. And at that time, I know that it wasn't for me. So eventually, I did go back to college and I earned a degree. But I just didn't feel like there were any other options, and I didn't have a program like this that you're running to steer me in a specific direction or a specific route. So I had to find it on my own. I was wondering if you're finding more and more kids are like that nowadays, where they're considering gap years or they're considering professions or careers that maybe don't entail a four-year degree or a master's or a doctorate. You know what I mean? Are more kids considering that option?
I've definitely had more kids, especially with COVID, you know, look at the experience and saying, "I don't want to go to virtual college right away." So they're looking at, "How do I do a gap year? How do I do different experiences that way?" There are more open to that. I think that's part of, if I think about the public, you know, in terms of, you know, as they're more open to it also within the community, I think that's allowed students to have that freedom to do it, too. You know, it's not that pressure, like you said, to be, always have to go to a four-year, go to a four-year, but what's the best route? You know, I'm still working with a student that's two years out, graduated from the high school, and we're trying to get him to the apprenticeship for electrician. And that's our goal, is to help him until he gets to be successful. And so we try to do that with our students who may be stuck and bring things together. And so trying to find those alternate routes are the best things. And more kids are thinking about that. They are looking at the certification programs. They're looking at the two-year colleges. They're looking at the trades, and what can I do and where can I do it? So it is going to be more relevant, and those are the things I just try to open up.
Well, if they need any incentive, they should see the house that my plumber lives in.
It is amazing. Yes. They can do quite well on the trade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other board members?
Yep.
Mr. Ely.
If I had to do it again, I'd be a plumber, trust me. If I joined the Marine Corps, I'm going to be a plumber. But that didn't happen. The other thing I thought, just, I wasn't going to say anything, but this, I think this is another important thing as we're talking about the soft skills, the eye contact, the being dressed appropriately, the "hey" rather, or... The one I get is "yo", you know, "yo", like, "yo." Okay. Now, it's "dear sir", it used to be "dear sir" or "madam", right? But I think the only thing we needed to also do, and I don't know if this is your job or how we would structure it, but at some point, we need to kind of, to the seniors, talk a little bit about the issue of pursuing education and what that entails financially, and explaining to them the financial systems of borrowing and the impact it has on their lives. I think a lot of us have been seeing a lot of the stories about the impact of student loans financially on people. A lot of them got into it for the right reasons, and now are facing a lot of potential crippling debt. And then they want to choose that option, but I think that a lot of times, we fail to really articulate what these choices are. And, you know, you, as we all know, you graduate from high school, you're filing for applications for college. Things are moving a million miles an hour. The parents want to, you know, get in on it. And choices are made sometimes without thought, without real reflection and examination. It's not up for us to say, "Yeah, buy this or that." But it's, maybe it's up for us if there's a way to do that, and maybe this is not your, I just throw this out there. But there's some way we could bring in people... that there's some way we could bring in people, you know, giving a sort of antiseptic view of what long-term education costs really mean, and explaining all the things before people commit to that. It's not our responsibility to be fiduciaries, but at the same time, if we're trying to prepare people for the next step, part of that is, how are you going to pay for it? Or, this is what it's going to cost. You may want to go to a two-year college for financial reasons, you still may have to borrow money, you may want to go to a private college, we all know what a private college costs as well. I just think sometimes, when you look at these horror stories of people who are saddled with debt I couldn't even begin to imagine at the age of 23, it has an impact on everybody down the line, on our economy, on our, on who's going to be working, all that stuff. So I just throw that editorial comment out along with everybody else, so, thanks.
No, no, I appreciate that, and I think that's something, if we, you know, if we look at more of like a reality check night, where they can learn about, all right, you're going to choose a career, what's the, what's the starting salary, along with what's your debt, putting those things together and starting to have.
And over the arc of your career, if you're, this is what it would cost, it's, you know, to repay that, on top of the other things you may want to pursue, which is a family, a house, a car, you know, those kind of home economic, what we used to call home economic questions. But these are things now that are, I think, impacting everybody, and it's a, it's a debate being held in every, you know, across the country in terms of this whole financial issue.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, thank you so much, congratulations. Thank you for getting Mr. Lesser to come out.
Thank you.
Mr. Emmett, COVID-19 update?
Yeah, I don't think that we'll be clapping after this presentation, if I could have Mr. Bearball come up to the podium, would provide you an update. I want to just provide you an update with regard to current data here in Weathersfield. As, as you know, we have seen a significant uptick in the number of positive cases in Weathersfield, and really across the entire state of Connecticut. As of last Thursday, the entire state, with the exception of seven towns, were in the red alert, meaning positive cases 15 per 100,000. For Weathersfield, you know, we had a EOC meeting last Friday where we get to meet with Charles Brown, and Charles really talked about exponential growth, so let me give you a little bit of data. November 18th, we, in Weathersfield, had 9.9 cases per 100,000. That didn't even get us close to the red zone, we were actually in the yellow alert level, just shy of orange. The following week, November 24th, Weathersfield was up to 17.6 cases per 100,000, which put us right into the red alert zone. December 2nd, Weathersfield rose to 26.9 cases per 100,000. And last Thursday, December 9th, Weathersfield stood at 45.3 cases per 100,000. So we have seen significant growth over the past month. Our dashboard, which is up on our website, is updated on a daily basis by Mr. Bearball. I do want to give a shout-out to Mr. Bearball. As you may know, Klobabrowski has left the district, she now is working as a liaison for the state of Connecticut, so we are in the process of interviewing for a new nurse supervisor. In the meantime, Mr. Bearball has been diligent about updating the dashboard on a daily basis. Yours truly also has been doing a lot more in the way of contact tracing, and again, the communication going out for each case we have. I think it's critically important to make sure the community is aware of the cases that we have. I also want to let you know that we are diligent with regard to whether or not we believe that we have any spread within schools. We do a tremendous amount of contact tracing. So as of this afternoon, we've had a total of 177 cases reported in Weathersfield. 154 of those cases are among students, 23 among staff members. Today alone, I reported, out this afternoon at 5:00 on Parent Square, we had seven positive student cases, one positive staff case. Yesterday, I reported the largest single-day number of cases that I have ever reported, and that was 14 cases yesterday, which encompassed the weekend. I do want to talk a little bit about quarantine as well. I know that we talked with the board earlier in the year, and there was the concern around students being quarantined. We have taken proactive steps over the course of the year to ensure that we get kids back in school as quickly as possible. Two ways that we did this were, we reduced the number of quarantine days from 10 down to seven, with a negative test after five days. The other thing we did was, we implemented the screen and stay protocol, and that screen and stay protocol allows students that have had close contact within the school setting, within the classroom setting, to remain in school while parents monitor for symptoms for 14 days. Thus far, as I speak to you this evening, we have implemented screen and stay for 88 students across the district. So, so far, so good. I do also want to let you know with regard to quarantine, as of this evening, we have a total of 56 students in quarantine. Here's why. We have two factors here. Preschool is one. Unfortunately, screen and stay is not applicable for preschool, so over the past three weeks, we've had two positive cases in our preschool program, and as a result, students must quarantine. Screen and stay just doesn't apply. The other place where screen and stay doesn't apply is in the event that students are exposed within sports. So there we go with the quarantine. And I know Mr. Bearball is contacting parents, he is working directly with the nurses, working with the Central Connecticut Health District. So in terms of what you're seeing, Mike, what are you seeing out in the field?
So what we're seeing is a mirror, again, like I told you the last time we spoke, of what's out in the community. We're up to, what was it, 45 for the last EOC meeting, so as Mr. Emmett said, we reported 14, the most we've ever reported Monday over the weekend. We did have double-digit reporting last week too, so it's kind of mirroring that. I have to say, the nurses, the administrators, and everybody doing, it's a team effort when we do contact tracing, because it's, it's a gigantic undertaking, because there's different scenarios for screen and stay, there's different scenarios when you're in a classroom, there's different scenarios when you're at lunch, there's different scenarios when the actual contact occurs outside of the school setting. So there's multiple layers to that contact tracing. What we want to do is make sure that we identify close contacts and not remove kids that don't have to be. So what we do is, we make sure that we try to get some information, as much as can get provided to us from the people who are positive, so we can look and say, did anything happen in the school? And thus far, we have not had any school spread. Our mask compliance is still very good, from our youngest all the way to our oldest, we're doing a good job with that. Keeping our cafeterias, as you heard Highcrest saying, right, they have to manage, they have multiple lunch waves, that's what we do at the high school, we do at the middle school as well, in different locations, to try and mitigate this contact when we do have masks off, and we get on them, hey, put your mask back on when you're eating. These are working. They're working, they are. Although we are seeing, although we are seeing cases increase, it's just a mirror of the community, but we are keeping our kids in school. So that's the key. They miss too much already, we want to keep them in school. So we do a real good job, our folks are really thorough, and unfortunately, we're very good at it now, I think, contact tracing. So, in multiple environments, because we'll get the sports team that gets a positive case on the sports team, and we'll find out about it when they come in school, now that falls upon us. So our nurses, our administrators, they pull up their bootstraps, they go in, they do the contact tracing for what happened outside of school, and we get it done. So they're well-versed in it. It's very, it has been a team effort, and we'll get through this wave, and then we'll be moving on, and hopefully we get down on the decline, and we keep these kids in school.
Hey, Mr. Bearball, you talked about the issue of, you know, spread within school. Anytime we believe that we have spread that's potentially happening within the school, which we have had one time this year, which we thought over at the middle school, we will report directly to the Central Connecticut Health District, who then reports directly to the DPH. The DPH then gets involved and does, you know, deeper contact tracing. At this point in time, you know, certainly with winter sports starting, we've already had several positive cases that have encompassed both our hockey team as well as our wrestling team, so that's something that we're going to be monitoring very carefully. What I can tell you in terms of spread that we're seeing, we're seeing lots of siblings, lots of spread within family. So today, of the eight cases that we reported, three were siblings. I had, I think, six out of 14 that were siblings yesterday, so we are definitely seeing family spread. We're also seeing spread within the community, so last Wednesday, I got the call from Charles Brown in the early evening about the potential of cheerleading. It was an off-site, out-of-town cheerleading group. Ultimately, I mean, it was a, breathing a sigh of relief, we only had two students that were involved with that, that we had to ultimately quarantine. So it is out in the community, but as Mr. Bearball said, I think it's critically important to remember. The idea here is really focusing on keeping our kids in school. As he had said, the mitigation strategies continue to be in place. Our kids have been great about wearing the masks, I think that's one of the key mitigation strategies. Having the hand sanitizer and the materials together. Any school that needs materials only needs to reach out to their custodian, who in turn will then reach out to physical services. So the mitigation strategies are important. I also want to let you know with regard to vaccination rates, I reiterate this every time I talk about it, right now for students, vaccines are not mandated, but I've said it before, I'll say it again, is certainly encouraged by medical personnel, and our data bears that out. So up to this point in time, we've had, of all of our cases among students, 91% of our positive cases are among students who are unvaccinated. That is significantly higher than the staff. Interestingly enough, with the 23 staff cases we've had, we have just about a 50/50 split with regard to unvaccinated versus vaccinated. So from a vaccination rate perspective, I'll give you a little bit of background with regard to Weathersfield. For ages 5 to 11, as of last Thursday, 16.21% of Weathersfield 5 to 11-year-olds are fully vaccinated. That is the highest number among the four Central Connecticut Health District towns. Rocky Hill's at 10%, Newington is at 8.3%, and Berlin is at 7.3%. For our 12 to 17, we have gone beyond the 70% mark, so 70.16% of our 12 to 17-year-olds are fully vaccinated in Weathersfield. And 18 to 24, which encompasses our oldest students, we have 85.14% of those students in age group vaccinated, so. And Weathersfield as a total, as of last Thursday, we have a total of 3,148 cases all told. So the numbers at this point are high, but again, we remain vigilant in monitoring where the spread is happening. Again, I can tell you, I know that there are parents who are unhappy, certainly with the CAC guidelines, they are somewhat different, and we have to apply them differently, but we're doing the best we can to make sure that we're keeping our kids in school, open five days a week, and continuing to provide the academic and social, emotional support our kids need. So, Mr. Bearball, anything else to add?
No, I think we've pretty much covered it, so that's our goal, to keep the kids in school and keep them safe, as it should be.
Any questions or comments? Yes, Dr. Regan Lefebvre.
Thank you very much for that, and thank you for all the hard work that you're doing. None of this is fun, we all know that, but it needs to be done, and I appreciate the professionalism and speed with what you're doing it. Just thinking longer term, how can we move from a screen and stay to a test and stay? Because it seems that testing is what's, what's missing here, and I know other towns, Guilford, I think, for example, do have testing available through schools. Is there any way we could do that?
So the difference between the testing that comes into the schools is, testing is for your unvaccinated students, and it's done on a weekly basis. So if someone was deemed to be of close contact, and they chose to do screen and stay, or they chose to do the typical quarantine, they would not get tested through that program. That's to detect cases of asymptomatic, or people who are kids that are sick that don't know it, so there's a difference with there.
Okay.
So in order to get a test to come back, that would not be the avenue to go, that's not what it's offered for. That's a random testing of people who have their children sign up, who are not, and it's only for the unvaccinated folks as well. So it doesn't encompass everybody, because we do have some breakthrough thrill, so it's a different program.
So is there any scope, and maybe, this is not something you can answer right now, but something we should all think about, to get testing in schools? I'll just give you an example, I have three children, they're actually in three different programs, one's in daycare, one's in magnet, and one's at Hanmer, and we've had eight trips to the pediatrician this fall for COVID testing. I have a son who's in quarantine right now. My daughter, I missed the last meeting because she had been sent home. Now technically, I wasn't a, a direct contact of the kid who was in her class who was sick, but had she tested positive, then I would have been, and in the meantime, I would have infected you all potentially, I thought you wouldn't like that. Anyway, so I sat that one out, but tonight, I actually got a home testing kit and was able to test immediately and know that I was safe to come here tonight, even though my son remains in quarantine. And it's just, for parents, and I think also for teachers, you know, they just had kids go home sick, and they're wondering the whole day, oh my gosh, am I going to get sick too? It would be such a reassurance if we could have testing onsite somehow through the school nurses. So it's just something to think about, because this is not going away. I'd love to also see us think creatively about how we can encourage vaccination. Maybe it's, you know, having one of those kind of like thermometer things with the red line moving up in some prominent place on our website or something. But I think there's still a lot of confusion amongst families of younger children about whether they should, or where they should do it, and anything we can do as a board, I think to encourage that is really in the interest of our students' health.
Absolutely. And I know Mr. Emmett's partnered with Heartthorood Healthcare and everything, and put out the vaccine clinics, and we've been very, put out there on our, on our website and everything like that, how you can go do that, and it's readily available within the community, you can go, you can go on 211 and punch up your area, and they'll tell you where you can go get vaccine. I know testing in and of itself, because there's such a demand to get back and everything, it's getting harder to get an appointment, which makes it difficult, but right now, and I'm sure when we have our DPH meetings coming up on next Tuesday, right now, that testing option is just how I described it, there isn't a bring-in school for daily thing, so maybe they will go down that route if they get enough requests for that, but as of right now, that's not an option for us to explore, absolutely we would. Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a quick question. In regards to your reporting about who's fully vaccinated, are you considering numbers two weeks after the second shot, or is it just the second shot? And how do you know that the student has been vaccinated? Because my daughter's, I don't think I've told the school at all that she's vaccinated.
Yeah, so, great question. Thank you, Amanda. With regard to fully vaccinated, we are looking at 14 days past the second dose, is what we determine is fully vaccinated. I've had some unfortunate cases where I've had students or staff test positive after, in between dose number one and two. I had a staff member test positive actually, I think, within 10 days after the booster. So it does happen, and breakthrough cases can happen, even among fully vaccinated, we've seen that, but the hope there is, the likelihood of hospitalization is significantly less. With regard to the notifying the, the school, what will happen is, we'll know if your child is vaccinated when we call to talk about a contact tracing, because that's, that's going to determine, let's figure it out. And to your point, Dr. Regan Lefebvre, is getting vaccinated eliminates the need to have to quarantine. So when we contact trace, if your child has been exposed, we're going to call, the nurse is going to say, is your child fully vaccinated? And at the high school level, I know we've gone as far as getting vaccination cards just to ensure that we, we have that on file. So again, is it a mandate? No, but it's certainly a recommendation, and it's something that the nurses would ask, because it's going to determine what the, is it screen and stay, is it quarantine, or not having to do anything at all.
Do you suggest that parents contact the schools to let them know? Because your numbers, they seem, they could possibly be skewed, because, you know, my daughter, as of Friday, she will be fully vaccinated, she's past the two-week point.
Right.
But you wouldn't know, and so then that 15%, it could be 20, and we don't know.
Yeah, I actually, what we have is, we have a database that we share, it's by school, so I can tell you already that I have at the elementary level, and Charles, right, I already have two other students that I know are fully vaccinated, based upon the fact that they were close contacts. So anytime we make a contact, we're going to ask that question about whether or not your child's vaccinated. Once we get that data, your child is listed, your child does not have to quarantine, but we've already documented that he or she is in fact vaccinated, so.
And the percentage, so you know, of vaccinations per age group that Mr. Emmett gets, comes from Charles, right from DPH, so they have a database too, when they administer a vaccine, if you ever saw your vaccine card, there's a lot.
That number comes from the DPH, huh?
That's correct, in our EOC meetings, yep. Yep, so that's how we get our.
Skewed numbers.
Nope, that's how we get our percentage number, so, but to your point, to know that your child's vaccinated, we have a percentage, we may not know a specific child, so that's a question, when I call your house, and I hope I don't have to, but our, my first question, is your child fully vaccinated? Yes, and we go through the process, because that helps us determine if they have to quarantine or not. That's, that's one of the questions that the people calling you, doing a contact tracing, trace will ask. Okay.
And just to that point, Amanda, with regard to the data, the data that I shared with you this evening is available on the state website, that is exactly where I go, and I actually tend to get it on Thursday afternoon, so I take the wind out of Charles' sail on Friday at the EOC meetings. So that is, it's, it's, you know, just Google CT COVID data, and you can get all of the historical data on the vaccination rates, including the number, so that number I gave you 16.21%. That was actually, I want to say it was a total of like 324 out of 2,005 students in Weathersfield. Weathersfield Public Schools plus magnets, private schools, any resident in Weathersfield.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Mr. Cassio?
Yeah, just clarification, I'm sure you might have said it, but you indicated there's 177 cases, 154, 23 ratio. That is since the beginning of the school year?
That is correct, sir.
Yes. Just wanted to make sure-
Just this, yes.
This school year?
This school year.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, because I, you know, I don't want people to think, oh my God, as of today, you know, we've got this many cases.
No, no, that's throughout the start of this school year itself, where, to where we are right now at this point, yes.
And the same thing with the numbers of 3, 3,408, that's Weathersfield's number?
That is Weathersfield number, that, that number, 3,418 cases, that is total cumulative since the beginning of the pandemic.
Okay.
Right, that's the truth.
Anyone else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Moving on, Meetings Health Finance Operations Committee meeting, 11/23/21, we talked about that last meeting, so meeting scheduled, correct council was, is canceled, Ms. Granado informed me tonight. We have Human Resource Committee on 12/16/21 at 7:00 PM, and we have Facilities and Maintenance Meeting on 12/20/21 at 6:30 PM. There's no unfinished business, public comment? Anyone in public wishing to make comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address, you have five minutes. Public comment is closed. Board comment, any board members wishing to make comment? Ms. Granado?
I'll talk about the Hunger Action Team, because this time of the year, they're very busy, and the town is, continues to be so generous. So the Hunger Action Team for Weathersfield met on Zoom meeting on Friday, the 10th of December. The Weathersfield Food and Fuel Bank reported that 150 Thanksgiving dinners were distributed to households in town. A toy drive for a holiday store ended today, the toys and gifts will be distributed on Thursday, tomorrow, Thursday this week, December 16th, at the Community Center. Energy Assistant requests really ramped up, more citizens in town are now qualifying, and the cost of food and energy has been going up. The Dazzling Dozen reported on their work to increase the number of participating organizations. The Dazzling Dozen are businesses and organizations set to work on a food drive in their selected month. The Weathersfield High School may be volunteering through their outreach clubs to transport the foods collected by these organizations and get them to our food bank. Weathersfield Public Schools Month to organize a system-wide food drive is the month of May. The Keen Foundation will be raising money for our after-school programs through another event, the Luminary Event. Please visit their website for details on ordering your lights for Christmas Eve. The Weathersfield High School Interactive Club and the Weathersfield High School Hat Club will be collecting personal care and cleaning products for the Weathersfield Food Bank. You can drop off any contributions at the high school. And this is my opportunity to wish everyone in our schools and in our community a fabulous and restful holiday break and a very healthy and happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granado. Anyone else?
I have some.
Yes, Ms. Dur.
One, I just wanted to tell everybody that the Finance Committee meeting is actually going to be held on January 11th instead of the 25th. And then also, I just wanted to say that I attended the Charles Wright Holiday Shop, and that's when the PTO purchases gifts for mom, dad, grandma, brother, sister, and they wrap them up, and they let the kids come in and pick them out, and for $1 each, they, they're able to pick out a present for their family. It was sold out, and it was a great event, so, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes, Dr. Regan-Lafave.
I talk too much, and it's late, but this is a very happy time of year, and I, I want to wish everybody very happy and restful holidays, but I also want to take a moment to acknowledge the anniversary of the Sandy Hook massacre, which is obviously an event that is so horrific to all educators, but I think especially to us here in Connecticut. And just to send out a public message, that if you have a weapon in your home, please make sure it can't be accessed by somebody who shouldn't be using it. That's the one thing that you can do as a citizen in Weathersfield, I think, to ensure that it's harder for these things to happen. Obviously, people who have, who are disturbed need assistance, but that's never a quick fix, that's a long-term thing that we have to manage. So, and to send my best wishes out to our school counters also at this time of year, and for the work they do every day, and our school's social workers, it's a really important job, and I appreciate them. Thanks.
Thank you.